Thank God for giving us information this evening. I ask you to transcut the decision, you may make a decision for our district, for students, for staff, for community, all those who are overfaked. Thank God for guidance and washingovers as we complete our meeting and as our guests and staff make their way home from our building, granted by the grace of God. We continue to bless our district, community, and our church center.
For the record, if one of our members is present, we accept that this podium is in his hands. It's time to see him for the presentation of votes.
All right, guard, and oath. Hail, hallelujah! Hail, hallelujah! All right, guard, oath. All right, guard, oath. Oath. East, hails, hallelujah!
Will everyone please join me in saying the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Order, hallelujah! Oath. All right, guard, oath.
Some questions?
All right, this is kind of a program to be around and expect the way to thank for coming out tonight. Certainly thanks for the cool weather, provided a nice, warm spot, not too cold, not too hot.
As they're loading the PowerPoint, we're going to start off with celebrating our principals this month. October is Principal Appreciation Month, and so we would like to get a group picture, if possible, of all of our principals down here at the front. So if you all would like to join up at the front, we'll be right back. Okay, are you guys ready? One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Awesome. Did the other side turn?
I... I'll just see the business.
Okay. But we certainly appreciate all 13 of our principals for all that they do, and one month is not long enough to recognize them for all that they do. So next, we are recognizing care award recipients. We did invite them this evening, and I hadn't seen any of them long here. Oh, yay, great, okay. So we'll go through all of it and then recognize those that are here. So last Tuesday, we surprised three employees in Sheldon Lake care award. If you remember, CARE stands for COT, Acting and Responding with Excellence, and it's awarded to employees that are nominated by their peers and community members for exceptional customer service to others. We present this award quarterly to Sheldon Lake employees, and I'll announce the winners that we have with us this evening. So we have Diana Hino. She is a special education aide at Sheldon Lake Elementary. We also have Ms. Crystal Williams, who works in the transportation department and the bus driver. So as she's walking in, she was nominated for always putting students first, making sure they're safe. She teaches them to be respectful. She even provides fun treats for them on Fridays for those that ride her bus. So parents say that she sets the tone for the day for her students and makes sure each child is prepared for a happy school day.
As I break my way up a bus there, you had such an awesome response. I almost had me crying in there. So I'm tearing up. Had to get her a bus, you know, where to park a bus. Anyway, nevertheless, glad we were just surprised.
All right, are you ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. I have one more phone. Okay, and next we have Ms. Ashley Barclay, and she's the after-school program director at Garrett Elementary. As she's walking in, Ashley is former faculty for King High School, and is described as punctual, loved by all students and families, professional, excellent communicator, and always willing to help others.
We can tell the word.
Okay, if you want to nominate an employee for a CARE award, they do open back up again in November, and you can go to sheldonisd.com/care. Okay, do we have anyone here from Lifesavers Emergency Room?
This is Alicia East.
Yes, okay, so I would like to invite her and then Dr. Said and Ms. Taylor to the front. Okay, so Lifesavers Emergency Room is signing on as a new partner in education, and so Ms. Alicia East, they would like to support King High School's MEV Academy and MID Academy, and they're also wanting to speak at Career Days and help in any way possible with those programs, so we're certainly appreciative of that. We've got two other business partners signing on with us tonight. Ms. Gomez from Bounce. And I'd also like to have a couple of units from Cravens. Ms. Gomez will be adopting Cravens Early Childhood. She is a former graduate at King High School, class of 2012. She's also a former employee from 2014 to 2018, and now she would like to give back to the community who helped her where she is today. Bounce, they have different bounce houses, small businesses, and they're going to be at our Fall Festival, actually, too. And next, we have Ms. Rochelle Rindman.
Yes.
And then I'd like to call Mr. Vialla. So she will be adopting Sika, Sheldon Early Childhood Academy. She also wants to help out campuses and give back to our community as well, so we're very appreciative of that. Okay, so just want to bring a couple things to your attention. On Friday, the 21st, we have a football meeting at Panda Stadium, but we hope you'll join us beginning at 5:00. The career and technical education programs are having a tailgate where you can learn more about the programs of study offered in the CTE and support the Panda Football Team. There's also a cash prize for a 50-yard field goal that will be happening in pregame. And that event is sponsored by the East Harris County Empowerment Council, so. And next, we hope you'll join us next Saturday, October 29th, out at Crenshaw Memorial Stadium from 9:00 AM to noon for our first annual Community Fall Festival, so we're really looking forward to that. We have a lot of sponsors, including some new partners that have signed on with us that we recognized this evening that will be there. Really looking forward to a great event with that as well. And then we will close with some birthdays, so Dr. Davis, you want to lead us there?
All right, as y'all know, how we do at Sheldon ISD, we're going to ask our three ones to have two here and have this smile on top of their face, with this bummer and with Martinez's, I would say, so he can stir it up, too. So y'all, we're going in, have birthdays on streets. Ladies, please, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
All right, so I didn't begin the district update with information about enrollment, but we have met a major milestone. Wow, we have enrolled our 11,000 students. This milestone was briefed on October 14th at Monahan Elementary. And picture here, you'll see a student with his mother probably taking a picture with his distant and Dr. Douglas. So congratulations to Sheldon ISD on continuing to grow and serve students. And then the report for enrollment, still growing, about 478 students from last year. Our attendance has dropped just slightly, so a little bit, a half of a percent, but our principals have an attendance campaign. October is usually when students start to slack off a little bit, and we are pushing them to continue to come to school so that they can learn, okay? Next, on our update for tonight, there's a recommendation for the board to approve the district program plan and the campus improvement plans. This was formerly known as the district improvement plan, but the name has changed. Just wanted to remind the board that this plan contains five goals. The first is, of course, to maximize student learning for all. The second, to attract, develop, and retain highly effective staff. The third, to build positive relationships with parents, families, and community members. Fourth, to ensure safe and positive learning environment. And fifth, to maintain and monitor systems to ensure financial accountability across the district. So this year, the district program plan and the campus improvement plan, that initiative has been led, of course, with a collaborative approach under the Teaching and Learning Department, and so Dr. Stewart is going to come forward at this time and give you a little bit of information about our progress in developing this plan and our process as well. Dr. Stewart?
Good evening. We wanted to make sure that as we go through the EPP, the CIP, that we kind of share with you the process, the journey that we went through. It's definitely not something that each year we just kind of pull the old plan up, refresh it, and move forward. What we ask is that we really dive deep into the data, look into the initiatives that take place, protect the progress that we've made, right, by holding on to what's been effective, but also look at and innovate in new ways that we can also move forward. And so within that, what we'll see is that the work that's been put forward, a huge kudos to Dr. Scarrow for assisting, Dr. Deereman for helping lead with a lot through the federal program grants, and to all of our principals and their committees on their campus that put the campus improvement plans and the district program plans together, because it really is a collaborative effort. So one of the things that we focused on is, is we know that there are requirements that go into it, so let's meet those requirements, but let's also take a really deep dive and ensure that we reach our goals. And then our goals are all the way aligned throughout the district so that it really helps us achieve what we achieved, what we sought to achieve, to reach that desired outcome. So first off, what we want to kind of share with you is, it's a consistent collaboration. So we focused on bringing in stakeholders, parents and community members, as well as the committees that we have on our campuses that are built up of our staff, so that we really pull in accurate information about what those goals should be. So what you're seeing in there is not something that was just figured out by one person. You're seeing a consistent collaborative process that was ongoing to develop the plan. So it wasn't just one person sitting down in her room designing. It truly does represent what the campus seeks to reach, as well as the district program plans that we seek to reach. They also need citizens to be ongoing support. So once we identified the levels of success that we want to see in the district and how that feeds into each campus and what their role is and how that plays, what we decided to do was is to align all of those services, align all of that data into documentation that allows us to provide ongoing support, so that each one of the other departments within our district, multilingual, advanced academics, the special education department, curriculum instruction and teaching and learning could reach out and really help support where that is needed. What it really allowed us to do is to pick initiatives that we felt like as a joint effort, we'd be able to reach because we'd be able to be all focusing and rowing in one direction, which means so much more when we start looking at how to effectively monitor, because if people are all over the place, it's much more difficult to monitor. But if it's aligned, it gives us the opportunity to align data throughout our processes so that we can more accurately reach those goals. And the next piece that we'd like to talk about is our data disaggregation. We try to look at how to find each one of those measurable goals in a time you would expect to get that data. So for example, if we're looking at how students are progressing and reading at the earliest levels, we should be monitoring that when that data is fresh and it's coming out. That way, when we sit with each one of our campus groups and we talk about where that data is and are we reaching a goal, are we on the pathway, it's fresh data, it's new. We don't want to look at beginning of the year data in December. Beginning of the year data should be looked at at the beginning of the year after it's taken. That allows us to monitor it just much quicker and for us to be less reactive to the situation and address in timely needs those interventions that need to take place. So those were pieces that went into building the district program plan and the campus improvement plans. Again, it's a lengthy process. It starts pretty early in the summer, towards the end of last school year, as we start winding down. That way, we can identify what was effective in our previous campus improvement plans and district program plan to carry forward to protect the progress while also looking at the new areas that we need to improve. Any questions or concerns about the process? All right, I think we've got some questions. And the next person, I believe, is Ms....
Hey, good evening. Just wanted to talk to you just a moment about the intruder detection audits. These are the audits that I talked to you guys about earlier in the summer, actually beginning, probably around June or so. So the intruder detection audits are coordinated by the Texas School Safety Center, and they have contracted Region 4 to send folks out to every single campus in all of Region 4 to do their safety audits. So we actually had our first one. These audits started on September the 12th, but we had our first audit on September the 13th, and it was at Carroll Elementary. When the auditor came out, she or he went through all four parts of the audit, which are, which is to make sure that, you know, we have good processes in place, that people cannot easily get onto our campuses, and once they do get onto our campuses, they either have, you know, one of our ID's, or they run through the Raptor system and they're with someone. We pass that. I should say, Miss Benavides, and her staff passed it. They also check the exterior doors to make sure the exterior doors were functioning properly and were properly locked. Pass that with flying colors. Then, because we have an expectation in Sheldon that classroom doors are locked and closed when students are present in those rooms, they check the classroom doors and pass that, too. They also check to make sure that Carroll was keeping up with their weekly exterior door audits to make sure that those doors are always functioning properly, and then pass that. So Carroll Elementary, congratulations, passed with a perfect audit. And I might add, she got that perfect audit on her birthday, so that was wonderful. The audits will continue throughout the school year until all, each one of our campuses has been visited by the auditor, so I'll continue to bring you updates on those audits. Any questions?
So just some updates on where we are right now. Some of our ongoing projects, our King Middle School parking lot, we are moving forward with the installation of the gates that we talked about for that. In fact, that came in a lot less than what we thought, so we're going to move forward. You'll see that in the upcoming month or two, hopefully, get that going. Our King Middle School and our King Ninth Grade Generators, Stan Tech has submitted a design cost proposal. We're looking at that, but we may go back out and ask for some other contractors to put in, some of our tech firms, to put in their cost proposal. Thought it was a little bit higher than what it should have been, but it does look like that King Middle and King Ninth Grade complex, in order to properly cover it, may take four to five generators because of the number of buildings that are there, that there's so many separate buildings that we may have to put up additional generators there. So we're looking at that, seeing where we, how we can best use our funds to cover all of those campuses. Also, the King Middle School marquee on Tidwell, the repairs there have been completed, so if you drive by now, you should see that there's, there are no holes in that marquee that has been repaired. The King High School complex road striping, this is just to bring you up to speed, if you'll drive down the roads that are slated to become county roads at the high school complex, you'll notice that thermoplastic paint that is there has peeled up, and once it starts to chip, it continues to chip. And so we are looking at how we can take care of that because we may have to re-strive that before the county will accept those roads. Oftentimes, when we put that paint on to fresh pavement, it doesn't take the first time, that sometimes what we've been told is that it takes a second coat in order for that really to adhere to that concrete. But we are working with engineers and others on that project to see. We've been in contact with the county. We're going to have them inspect it, tell them, tell us, you know, what they need. If they don't need anything, then we can turn those roads over, and then they can begin maintenance. If we need to go back and re-strive it, then we'll look and see what we need to re-strive it with and what the cost on that would be. On some other items, just some other projects that we're working on. Harris County Public Health, we had our kickoff meeting last Thursday. We planned, and remember this is to be up and running by March 2024. That's their deadline, so we should see in the coming months, we should start to see some activity there. Sheldon Elementary, the marquee, we're working with Nash Industries. They've recommended a leveling company to determine the scope of work. If you go by Sheldon Elementary, their marquee is at a slant. It is just settled, so we need to get a pricing to fix that and determine if it's best to level that or replace that, see what that price is, and that's going to depend a lot on our subcontractors. Our NOC server HVAC, so in the Network Operations Room building across the driveway, that's where the servers for the internet are housed, and if you're not familiar with the servers, they put off a tremendous amount of heat. And so what we are looking at is getting an additional HVAC system that would help cool that room. There was a Saturday recently where one of the primary air conditioner went out, that room got up well over 90 degrees very quickly, and we could lose our servers that way. So we've already had Carrier come out, Automated Logic, looking at some altern, some options, I should say. So right now, we're looking at a design cost proposal, and that's in process, so once we know more, we'll bring that back to the board. And also, the KHS welding lab ventilation, one bid has been, I'm sorry, I'm still open. Bid has been received from Nash Industries, but we are waiting on additional bids, and that is, at the high school, the welding lab, as that smoke comes from the welding, we need to be able to get that to dissipate quickly so that it's not going out into the hallway and so that it's not setting off any alarms, anything like that. Any questions on that? I do want to bring you up to speed on three other items real quickly, too, is the storage building, we're wrapping that up, that's going very well. The grounds building, we are still working with a fire marshal. The fire marshal feels that that building should be part of the high school complex, the high school building, and wants us to incorporate that building into the fire alarm system at the high school and to run lines between those buildings. We're going to go back and talk with them. We feel that that's not a building that houses students, that that is simply a storage building, there are not even offices in that building, so that building should be considered separate and apart from our main facility. Also, I'd like to just give a shout out to the C-King High School band. They earned a Division One rating at the spring ISD Region 33 UIL competition Saturday, and so they have now advanced. So they have now advanced out of the first round and advanced to area. So, you know, consider that like playoffs, when you've advanced out of district and by district, and now you're in area, that is the level of competition that they're at right now at the varsity level, so very good job there. That competition will be held in the Leener Park, and we'll send out invites for that so you know the dates and times. Any questions on bond or facilities?
I don't think it has there or later on on the bond picks, but we'll see about that date on the ticket booth at high school.
Yeah, so we talked, was that last one, that we spoke about the ticket booth? We got, we got, we received a bid for that, and that bid was about $400,000, and we felt that was rather high, and so we had some options there. One is we could go ahead, go forward with that bid, knowing that right now we have about $2 million left out of the bond, that we have to draw those funds down off of that. Our second option would be to put a slab down, look at like a temporary type building for that. We talked about option three was to put a slab and maybe a canopy. We talked about option three was to put a slab and maybe a canopy. And then, option four was maybe to wait and look at, if the bond passes, to roll the ticket booth into the ninth and tenth grade complex, because the contractors are already here, the builders are already here, everybody's already on site. So, we may be able to get a significant cost reduction by do, by rolling it into that project and just expanding that scope of work at that time. Okay?
How about the band tower?
The band tower, I love it. I can't get to the top of it yet, because I'm scared of heights, but I really like it. No, it's up and it's there and locks and stuff, and I am serious. I only made, I made it up to the top one time, and I had to go back down a level. So, but I think the band is very appreciative of that tower, and I know that the director is lucky. If there's no more questions, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle Sudditt. She is with Synergistic, and she's going to present about Synergistic and their work in the district. Okay?
Danielle Sudditt, thanks very much for the opportunity. This is, as you recall, about five years ago, so we had to contract a partnership system somewhere for our energy costs, and is that time supposed to rule? And so, this is the presentation we're going to put forward tonight, and then at the upcoming next upcoming meeting, we'll ask the board to take a major action on it. All right?
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us. Danielle Sudditt, the Client Manager for Sheldon High School, Synergistic.
Fabian Reade from the concession list for Sheldon.
So, I'll give you a quick energy, I'll give you a quick energy program update. At first, reminding you of our key program objectives. So, we're here, of course, to reduce the utility spending, increase the cost savings, optimize your buildings and comfort systems, and encourage a culture of sustainability within the district. So, your energy programs is success. We're fifty-four months into the program right now. Overall savings is $1,088,538. And we have a recovery of $51,664,36. The reason these two figures are separate is because the $1 million only focuses on your actual reduction, reduction in consumption. So, that's your activity and reducing consumption. The fifty-one is separate because that's a tax recovery. We offer a program where we analyze your utility bills. So, we not only look at opportunities when we see spikes in the bills, but we also look for errors. So, we were, we were able to cover $51,000 in taxes that you were not supposed to pay. So, the utility credited you all that. And moving forward, you'll save about $5,000 just in fees alone every single one of your utilities. We've done nearly 4,000 building audits, same counting, and we have two buildings that are introduced and are certified. So, Monahan and Garrett are nationally recognized by the EPA in sustainability. And we're working on doing more actually right now. So, how do we do this? So, you guys have Fabian, who's boots on the ground. He connects with the maintenance and operations staff to make sure that he's looking for opportunities to save on the day-to-day. We have technologies that he's able to use so that we, when we find mechanical findings in buildings or things that we can connect with your maintenance staff on, we can come up with solutions for that. And then, for our management process, we meet often Mr. Bradkey and Mr. Sanchez. We do something called an Energy Management Action Plan. We go through our ECNs, our Energy Conservation Measure Goals. We track those goals. We always have a plan, and we hit it twice a year. Some of the fun stuff, your environmental impact, what this looks like for you and your impact. So, about 24,000 tons of recycled waste is equivalent to how much energy you save. We have 17 million miles of gas emission of vehicles that you guys have taken off the road because of your savings, at about 117,000 trees for over ten years, is what that's equivalent to. So, your average unit costs, there are some things we can't control, and that is the way that utility programs are trending in cost and fees. Everybody's going up, they're continuing to go up, and there's nothing we can do about it. The only thing we can do is control how much energy we use within the district, and we can negotiate rates, right? So, you can walk in with those rate rates. So, this is a reason why we don't want to let up on the program, because we want to balance out all of those speeds that are, that have already gone up and are going to continue to go up. So, building on some success, continuing on, we'll continue to develop an energy conservation culture to protect your natural resources. We'll continue to provide our engineering support that drives comfort and savings, and if we come up with solutions within the district, we'll pair it with maintenance staff. We'll strategically plan for extended rates to achieve greater savings. We find, you know, we know it's pretty good when people are not in the building. That's when we can save the most, so we grab the most opportunity to, to eliminate wasted energy when, when folks are not there. Communicate the program in your organization through social media, newsletters, and websites, and of course, for you to save, you can invest the dollars into what matters to you most. And again, achieving energy star building certifications, which we're currently right in the middle of. So, thank you for having us. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
So, on the, on the engineering support, is that, what does that consist as far as widening whatever components are?
So, what, I've had someone here nearly every month for the last year and a half, and your mechanical systems. So, as things are needing attention, we're giving a second opinion. Or just like in the case where maybe you're wanting to add some control systems, or you've added some legally controlled systems and you have some concerns about that, his credentials can get that stamped to say, this is what it should look like.
Generators, HVAC, or you know.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, we, they have an architect, I'm not, an engineer.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, and so, we'll have them look over those things before we move forward for a second opinion, having them work with land. We've talked about future building projects, bringing them in before we move into the building.
And this is all included in our program. There's no additional cost for any of them.
And then, the energy star building certification for Monahan, which is one of those, which we have.
Garrett.
And Garrett, not Garrett, it's, so, looking at the high school and Sheldon, where do we stand with those? They are U.S. campuses.
We're going to be doing audits over the next few months on all of the facilities to get them certified. So, we'll have more information once we complete those audits. But for, for the high school, it's gonna, it's gonna take a lot. We're gonna have to work hard on that one, making sure that it meets all the criterias and we're getting the facilities shut down as much as we can when people aren't in it.
So, we've been for fifty-four months, but was it, was it?
So, before, when we did it, we did two all buildings, but now all buildings qualified. So, the only two buildings that qualified at the time was Garrett and Monahan. Well, thank you for having us. We appreciate your support.
Yes, thank you.
My first question is, I have a seven A and a seven B, we have to answer.
Question by Mr. Rivas, second by Mr. Archie, any questions or comments? Others in favor? Any questions? We want to revisit this item, I don't think, consider 2022, '23 district program plan and campus improvement plans?
Another person has recommended one trustee approved the 2022, 2023 district program plan and 2022, 2023 campus improvement plan, the copy to the intent, we come by the news.
Sorry?
First by Mr. Archie, second by Mr. Rivas, any questions or comments?
So, I was just looking at the Zedon High School plan. And I guess if you look up page eight on, on the, on the, some maybe it's kind of spunky.
We'll look that up just one second. Did you say page eight?
Yes, ma'am. So, I'm looking at page eight, so. I'm sorry, I actually have a comment on, on page eight, so. You know, just looking at gifted and talented numbers, I just commented, it's, you know, we try to get those numbers up higher, so we get more involved in. And I don't know if it's gifted and talented, but if you look on page twelve of this, is the question. So, page twelve, going on through to page fourteen, so we're talking about like the star E O C testing, it may just explain to me, like, when you say the percent score approaches, and there's numbers for that, and then meets, and then masters. I feel that kind of, I comprehend what you mean when it says masters, but when it says approaches, does that mean that they're not passing that star in the course exams?
I'll, I'll start with the gifted and talented, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Stewart regarding the E O C scores. So, for gifted and talented, actually, the national average for the percentage of students who are identified as gifted and talented is about five percent. And so, year over year, we have been doing what we call blanket testing, whereas in the past, we used to require the parents to nominate their students, but what we found was that many of our parents didn't recognize the traits of gifted and talented students. So, what we started doing was testing all students across the board so that we could do a better job identifying those students. And as a result, we've been able to surpass the state average for identifying gifted and talented students, particularly in underrepresented populations. So, this Saturday, for example, we had over a hundred and some students show up in addition to those that we blanket tested at specific grade levels to help identify those students. But typically, there's, there's a very small population of your district, more so around five percent. But we are working really hard to continue to identify students, even if it's above the state or national average, because if they're in our student population, we need to identify them and serve them, so.
I, I know that we have made fast improvements over the years on the number. So, the years go, and that was just the handful of students. So, I know we're making improvement. I guess it's the model I'm thinking, you know, off my top ten, some students, all those students should be in part of the gifted and, and, so, I'm, you know. I don't, is that questionable, thank you?
Well, actually, there's two groups of students in that top two percent. You have your high achievers and your gifted students. And some of your gifted students actually may not perform. They might be creatively gifted versus academically gifted. Some, some school programs even have giftedness in some of the arts. And so, what, what we do is we funnel both those high achieving students and our gifted students into our AP programs, our dual credit programs, so that they are all served. It's just that percentage that is actually identified as gifted. And there are nationally normed tests to help us identify those students. Oh, no, 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 no. I think TV to talk all night. Yes, I understand. But I can tell you, Mr. Coleman, we are increasing the number of students and that we're serving in that high achieving population, as well as, and another area that I'm really proud of is the number of at-risk students we're serving in our advanced academic programs. So, yeah, we, we try to find that balance so that our students who are at risk are in those programs as well.
Thank you, Scott.
Dr. Stewart?
So, in terms of the scores, so for approaches, that is the minimum passing standard on each exam. And then, meets is the student has achieved more. Typically, that score is in between what would be considered approaches and masters. And then, the masters level is the students who are truly scoring at the higher levels. And for accountability purposes, each one is weighted with a higher weight. So, approaches is weighted better than not passing, meets is weighted higher than approaches, and then masters is weighted even higher than meets. And so, then, that's how they use it to calculate in overall.
So, approaches is pass if they are passing?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Others in favor? Any questions? I don't think, consider itemized fund balance assignments for fiscal year 2021, '22?
My first question, important, I must start out the slide for the year ended six thirty. Twenty twenty-two, I'm going to be attached to the number.
Any other questions, any comments or questions?
Could you come back?
Yes, and this is before the audit numbers, you know, we had to provide a weighted number. I was committing about anywhere from five hundred to one million dollars in addition to the fund balance. So, I figured out the number of months.
Oh, others in favor? For the I M C, consider the additional 2022, '23 fund rates, sir?
My first question, what's the proof of point two, two, three, different fund rate request? It's meant to double seven thousand seven hundred nine hundred dollars for not to pass.
Question by Mr. Rivas, second by Mr. Coleman, any comments or questions? Others in favor? Questions? I don't think, consider student advisor committee chat? Question by Mr. Martinez, second by Mr. Coleman, any questions or comments? Others in favor? Questions? You know, the board, information, tax collection report, investment report, Sheldon High School's inventory revenue report, our operating, child nutrition and debt service, notification of federal rights in order to Sheldon High School, enrollment October twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, government district report, I'm sorry, report, monthly bond and pay, home manager status report.
And you have another question? I'm, I'm in a moment. So, where you talk about like a freshman. So where it talks about like our freshmen, it has our freshmen at the ninth grade campus, it's seven hundred eighty-six. And then we have, uh, at the King High School, a hundred and seventy-five. So is that a part of, or are you calling high school, that better part of, is that?
Very good. I don't understand. All right, please go ahead. Yes.
Okay, so there are freshmen at high school campus, huh?
Okay.
The same, you have a comment, so, uh? All right, let's move to our closed session. All right. Uh, we want our fourteen, we're seeing our nominations. Question by Mr. Rivas, second one is for Archie, any questions or comments? Oh, is it paper? Questions, comments? Either they consider being asked someone to pay for twice, for what?
No, my question is, someone to pay for a total of fifty-one thousand two hundred, approved.
Question by Mr. Coleman, second one is for Archie, any questions or comments? Oh, is it paper? Questions, comments? Uh, for necessary uses, we have paying for football game versus a basketball scene Friday night. Uh, paying for football game versus summer creek, parent night, program routine, R T C choir, October twenty-eighth, or workshop, number one. Certainly, you can reset your team building program or just-
Out to the board, you don't need to, still need that kind of line, too. But it's, I thought that in the voice of doing the doctors, you know, that, now that training begins. And this is still going to be great for that, you know?
Well, considering association of school, working, region four, number second. See how they, some, uh, generaling, upcoming bond election, number second, signing, election day, number eight, when you're working, you're in the big team. Continuing education practice for people. I don't know, if you have a problem. Any other? Yeah, I had it, I'm so sorry. Sorry, sorry. School safety needs every two years, that requirement is all, four years, Martinez. Everybody breaking skin of them, needs every two years. Homer, four years, Martinez, Archie, Coleman, Miles, and Martinez. Those ones like a big, you can see, that requires, that's all, four years, calling. Child abuse prevention, needs every two years, that requires, that's all. Team building session was not met by anyone. Additional continuing education, minimum five hours every year. Homer, eight hours, four years, four hours. Martinez, ten hours, Archie, nine hours, Coleman, eight. Miles, nine, Martinez, needs five hours. That's all of that. Uh, more suggestions, organizations for future organizational activities?
Can, can I ask a question about our football team? I just, we saw, I know we lost to Allen, then North Shore. And we lost the other. Where are we as far as the district standings?
It's, uh, very, very close, is it?
Yeah, right now, I think we're in third place, uh, behind Tastia and North Shore. North Shore, Tastia are in the district. And, uh, we have one loss to district. We need North Shore out, and I think in our district, we have one loss to district. Uh, Tastia coming up, one of the big ones. And Summer Creek, who has lost to Tastia and North Shore.
So currently we're sitting third?
Right. We're playing Tastia.
I'm correct. North Shore is ranked number one, so Tastia is like six, seven?
Yeah. Yeah. So pretty tough district.
It doesn't matter, uh, arguably, it's definitely one of the top three.
Yeah. That makes you better.
So why are we eighth in the state? After we beat Tastia.
Uh-huh, that's right.
Uh, any suggestions for future agenda items?
Yeah.
Uh, moving forward, uh, we've assessed, uh, qualities of, like, the, like, the, Agnon and, and, and education. Do this stuff set up for the, the, the location, including, uh, as possible.